This time I'll call this meeting to order if we could have roll call.
Mr. Giuello.
In attendance.
Mrs. Hatch.
Here.
Mr. Holden.
Present.
Mrs. Koutash.
Here.
Mrs. Losinski.
Here.
Mr. Manotti.
Here.
Mr. Oppel.
In person.
Dr. Ritter.
Here.
And Mrs. Yolosh.
Okay.
If you could all please rise and salute our flag.
Our allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. This time I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda. You have something to say, Tom?
Mr. Chairman, before we approve the agenda, I would like to add the addendum to the board agenda as indicated.
Okay, a motion has been made to add the addendum to the agenda.
Second the motion.
Okay, a motion has been made. Seconded in any discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Motion to approve the agenda.
So move, Mr. Chairman, with the addendum.
Motion is made and seconded. Any discussion? Sensing none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, next item on our agenda is presentations and recognition. Item A is the Unity Mural Presentation.
I would ask if Mrs. Santilli would step forward and introduce the very fine team that helped produce a wonderful event, the Mine Fest 2017. If you could give us an overview and introduce the team, and you have a demonstration, I believe.
Absolutely. Thank you. I would like to ask Tina Henkel, the Director of STEM, to come on up. Andrea Dayodo, the Assistant Principal at Long Hill, to come on over. And also, I need to invite Kathy Riddle, who helped out tremendously with the community aspect. And also, I want to recognize Teresa Manus is here this evening. She is our fabulous art teacher at Long Hill School. And you'll see diligently work on the mural, as well as, I'd like to call up Michelle Piccolo.
She's back here.
Come on over. She was a huge part of this event, too. So come on over, ladies, as we go through. The PowerPoint is very, very quick, but we're just going to give you a quick overview. Do you want to shut the lights?
So through our strategic planning work, Kristin co-facilitates and co-chairs the Humanities Group. Kathy is the facilitator for the Community Group, and I facilitate the STEAM group. And we wanted to kind of brainstorm an event to close out the school year. And Kristin volunteered to collaborate with the three groups regarding how can we unify or unite the work of the Community Group, the Humanities Team, and the STEAM ideas and milestones that we're trying to develop out of the program and out of the teams. And so we came up with a Mine Fest event that is the first of what we hope to be many in the future, and as a kickoff for maybe some future events next year. And so we started to brainstorm with our teachers, not only at Long Hill School, but also across the district, and that's how Michelle Piccolo got involved as well. And we asked Kathy to come join us and brainstorm some ideas of how we can get the community involved as well. So we really feel it was a huge success. Nancy Adams kicked off the evening with three songs from the chorus where we actually took the music and amplified it onto a, through an app on the iPad, so that it actually was a visual display of the music on the screen as they were singing. And the songs that she picked were related to, obviously not with school function, but also a connection for humanities and also for, and for the world around us. I mean, a lot of the lyrics that came out of the song was making the connections between, you know, what they experienced in school and beyond. So these were some of the stations that we had. We had robotics, many robotic stations. I actually brought my kids, too, and my five-year-old, I couldn't find her, and she was actually playing in the Lego station all by herself, like manipulating all the Legos, so thank God we found her. We had a MacGyver station, which was the first round of trying to have a series of items where students had parameters and they had to create a certain structure where the parameters were met, given the items in the box. Milestone C is the first time that we're connecting with a aerospace and engineering program that we are hosting this summer through the program, Summer Learning Program, for students to participate in, and they got to fly mini drones with the U.S. Air Force pilot. We had a bookmark station where we had kids design bookmarks to give back to the, I always forget the name.
I have.
Where we donated them to, I forgot. We had a Rubik Cube Station, we had a parachute station, we had a static electricity station, we had a tallest tower station, we had a QR code scavenger hunt, we had a brain teaser station, and a tantrum station. And then finally, we wanted, oh, an archaeological dig where they actually dig through the chocolate chip cookies to dig out the cookie, the chocolate chip chips. And then finally, we wanted a connection to art and giving back to the community as well. And so Teresa Manus came up with the idea of creating a mural where students were designing individual tiles. And we're participating in building a beautiful mural that we are now, this evening, donating back to Shelton Public Schools and hopefully going to hang it and display it out in Central Office or wherever Dr. Coet wants to hang it. We want to also thank our sponsors. We had a great evening. I think there was a huge turnout. A lot of the survey results were very positive, and we're going to look to take that information to make it even better the next time around. Do you still want to add anything?
Yeah, so this was, as we always do at any event at Long Hill School, we like to get feedback from the parents and the community. So inside of your, you have in front of you a bookmark for you, you have a brain, and you have a flyer. And in there is the actual survey that we asked people to fill out, and these are the results of the survey. So if they could be extremely satisfied moderately, all the way down to extremely dissatisfied, and 98% of parents and students surveyed were either extremely or moderately satisfied. So we felt overall, for the first time ever doing this type of an event, we were really thrilled and happy with what we got. It seems to happen that not everyone fills out the survey, but for those of you who were there, you could see we had so many parents and families and kids. It was mobbed, but it was controlled chaos. It was really great. And I have to say, I have to thank any of the teachers that are here tonight. Joanne Allen, I see, back there, and all of the teachers that have been involved. We started planning this in January, and it's been, it turned into a much bigger and larger event, and we all, everybody, you know, was all hands on deck. And I have to tell you that 95% of the staff members willingly participated and, you know, volunteered their time to make this a great event for the kids. What I found after this event, in speaking with staff, is that all of these events that we, you know, worked on and created, that united these, all of these curricular areas to make them interdisciplinary, is the teachers were like, wow, I'm going to go back and do that in my class, and I'm going to try, I'm going to work with Mrs. Manus on that as well and make it interdisciplinary and thematic. So I think it sparked a greater excitement within the teaching staff, and they're already talking about what are we going to do next? So I told them, wait till next year, we'll see. So right now, Mrs. Manus is here, and one of the things that she did was we got, as Tina said, the tiles donated, and she got, from Home Depot, who was one of the parents at our school, and she ran a station, and we created, I say we, she really put this together, and this is, we are presenting this to you, the Board of Education, as a gift.
And of course, all the kids wanted to find their tiles.
Yes. And adults. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Enjoy your breaks. Yes.
Which one's yours, Crystal?
I know, she had to show me. It's right here. Like, mine's a modest contribution. But thank you.
Very nice, Teresa. Good job.
That was a very impressive event.
And then we're going to go to Sunnyside.
Yep, okay, and our next item is the Sunnyside School Presentation of Ozobots and Robots.
So Mrs. Yost has brought quite a team with her. Mrs. Yakowitz, thanks for being here. Our Library Media Specialist, Carrie Yakowitz, and of course, our Principal, Amy Yost, with a lot of young scientists.
That's a brain. Yes.
Good evening, everyone. Yes, we're good. Good evening. We have some special guests with us this evening, so if I could have my, our five students come on up, and they will each, come on over, they'll each introduce themselves to you and what grade they're in.
Hello, my name is Shreya, and I'm in fourth grade.
Hello, my name is Brock, I'm in first grade.
Hi, my name is Alice, I'm in second grade.
Hi, my name is Yashila, I'm also in second grade.
So we had, in the beginning, or through the month of March, we picked a House of Robots as a school-wide read, and then we had our culminating family night activity, which was all STEAM-related, launched off of the book. And Dr. Ritter happened to come that evening, and also Mrs. Hack. And I guess through teaching and learning, we were invited to come to present our Ozobots and talk a little bit about that. So I'll have my three younger ones can kind of come over, and they'll be play around, and they will answer any questions that you might have. But we do have a quick presentation for you first, and then we'll continue on with our two fourth-grade students.
During the month of March, Sunnyside embarked on a special project, an all-school book read on House of Robots by James Clancy. Thanks in the help of a teacher, each standard receiving copy of this book. Students were asked to read at school with their classroom teacher and at home over a four-week period with their special family members. Our aim was to build a community of readers at Sunnyside School. Everyone, students, parents, teachers, support staff, and administrative staff participated. Reading is a gateway to learning, opening doors to faraway adventures, new possibilities, and promising futures. Reading aloud at home has so many advantages. Creating stronger family bonds, higher academic performance, developing basic speech skills, improving communication skills, mastering language, formulating logical thinking skills, acclimating to new experiences, and knowing that reading is fun. We chose to focus on that book in the area of STEAM to bring our family evening to life with a hands-on approach. In addition, we wanted to equip our students with problem-solving experiences to encourage them to become stronger thinkers. The evening's activities were designed to encompass cross-curricular content: literacy, numeracy, technology, science, engineering, and library media. Although each of these areas has specific academic standards, they all emphasize developing perseverance in problem-solving skills, abilities to identify problems, and design and evaluate a solution. On April 4th, Sunnyside Elementary School hosted a House of Robots family reunion. PTO supported the event by purchasing equipment and materials to meet a meeting session. One of the sessions included Ozobots. Students and parents were able to code during the 20-minute session using markers and computers. Ozobot bits can be used with students as young as six years old. Students use black, red, blue, and green markers to code. Block markers are used to draw a path for the Ozobot to follow. Students can give the robot different commands by changing the color of the markers along the path. Students in all grades experience the Hour of Code in the month of December. During the Hour of Code, students use Blockly to create a list of commands for the computer to follow to accomplish tasks. Since they are familiar with using Blockly, they were easily able to transition to Ozobot Blockly, the program that is used with Ozobots. Students create a list of movements, lights, and loops for the Ozobot. This code can be loaded by holding the Ozobot to a phone book. Once the program is loaded, students can watch the Ozobot complete the code that they created. The strategic plan for Shelton Public Schools includes five committees, one of which is STEAM. This committee is in the process of identifying milestones for all students in Shelton. A milestone that has been identified for computers is that all students in kindergarten through fifth grade will get an introduction to coding. Coding is identified as a milestone in the Library Learning Commons as a Bigger Space Activity. All Library Learning Commons will participate in the Hour of Code in December. Editing activities will continue within the Bigger Space throughout the year. Ozobots allows students to see their code come to life.
I like when the colors on the markers were big so that the Ozobot will go quick, slow, or zigzag. You can even hold up the robot to the computer and it will follow the command you gave it.
The Ozobots were so cool. I love hearing how they make them. I was so excited to program with the Ozobots.
I like how you can control the Ozobot with marker. It's fun to watch the Ozobot follow the path when you make shapes or write your name in cursive. The different colors can do different effects on them, too.
So this evening, we just, as you can see, we kind of put all of our presentation into the video. Got to love technology. We have some special guests that would like to show you and talk to you a little bit about how they've made some past, and we'll just take a few more minutes of your time. And we'll also have Shreya and Preston show you how it works on the computer. So I'll have Shreya and Preston start first. You want to come over here? You can talk about how you program the computer, and you guys can kind of play around there, and then we'll have you ask some questions.
Okay, so how do, you can program them on the computer by inputting these codes. And then you can pick to move forward with a distance of one step or a speed of medium, or you can rotate your Ozobot. And then once you have your blueprint down, then you go to this little button that says flash, and then that's to calibrate your Ozobot. And then to calibrate your Ozobot, you hold that down until it starts blinking white, and then it will start blinking green. And then, once it starts blinking green, then you can put it on there. You have to hold still on there until you load it or unload it, and then you tap load it, and then it will start to load your code into the Ozobot. You can also add some light effects. And there is a lot to choose from. You can turn off the top light and set, set the light to different types of colors. You can do police car lights, rainbow, traffic lights, disco, Christmas tree, and fireworks. Or you can loop the code, and then you can have it do it forever, or you can just have it do it for two times.
So the computer will have, the computer will have the Ozobots just on a flat surface, where you can see the other students over here are using the marker paths to create it. The different colors, the way that they are matched up, will have it give different patterns. Brock, do you want to show the term that you created?
Yeah.
Okay. On the block, right, and then, once it reaches the little red, see, it turns around.
So that's our presentation on Ozobots, and I'd like to also just recognize Joel Tishy here, supporting us with Library Media. She's been on the job with the Video Specialist, and she's been very supportive at Sunnyside and Long Hill Schools also. Just along the way, we've had many conversations, and we thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Again, that was an incredibly impressive presentation, and I wish we had those things when I was in Sunnyside. Okay, we'll pause for a couple of moments to allow any of the students and parents who would like to leave. Otherwise, you're more than welcome to hang out. I assure you, it'll be a fun and exciting evening.
As usual.
Yes. Yes, it's normal, it's big.
But the markers are special.
No. The robot reads the color.
Yeah, it reads the color. It's different colors, red, blue, and green.
Yeah, no, I thought it said Ozobots on the markers, like it had a special.
Oh, well.
They just come with the Ozobots.
Yeah.
So I could just get a permanent chirpy and do the same.
It probably needs to be the right shade.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But. Okay.
I certainly circulate this much, but I think from coming from you, I might, but I would just say that the process is getting, is making me feel like some.
Yeah, okay. All righty, at this time, we will move on to the next item, which is public hearing, and I see that we have a number of our cafeteria workers here today. And before any of you come up to the front, I just want to mention, as Chairman of the Board, that our experience with all of our employees that deal, although you're not our employees, you're SEDEXOs, but with all of the employees of SEDEXO who work in the cafeterias, has been exceptional. We think that you do an exemplary job. We're very happy with your performance, and we were not able to include your contract into the bid specifications, but that does not mean that we wouldn't be happy to see whoever may be selected, and may be SEDEXO again, continue with the same staff, because we know you folks work hard, you do your best for our students, and that's important to us. With that, if anybody would care to address the Board, we allow up to five minutes for each speaker, and this is according to Board Policy 9325, and a reminder that no Board of Education employees, students, or community members should be defamed within public comments. Would anybody care to address the Board? Would anybody care to? When you come up, if you would please state your name and address, and also, we have a sign-in sheet. Okay, I'll make it easier for our secretary for the minutes.
Madam, if you would sit right there?
Yeah, yeah, use the microphone.
If there's any other girls you all got to see, could you all stand up, please?
Thank you. Thank you very much. We just wanted to address the Board. We weren't able to meet with anybody, so we just wanted to let you know that we're just trying to preserve our jobs, no matter who comes in, and we want, you know, our standards met, like, we don't want, we still want good health insurance, you know, and good hours. And we just, we want you guys to know, because you're going to make the decision to, you know, who gets the contract, and we just want you to take it into consideration that, you know, all of us, you know, our lives, this is our livelihood. So we just want you to consider us when you make your decision. Okay?
Yeah.
Thank you.
And we have a couple of girls that just want to tell you.
Hi, my name is Michelle Fida. I'm a mother of four children. My husband is self-employed, which leaves the responsibility of obtaining health insurance for the family on me. I came to the lunch program over six years ago because there were job opportunities with health insurance. After two years of working for the program, I did obtain a position with these benefits. These benefits mean so much for my family. Losing these benefits would have a devastating effect on our lives.
Hello, my name is Joy Delmacchio, and my health care is very important to me because my husband is self-employed also, and it would be a great hardship to purchase it on my own. We'd have to get a policy with a huge deductible that we would never meet, so making it our responsibility to pay for our own medical expenses, which are very costly. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Pam Texera. I worked in a Shelton Public Schools for 19 years, and having my job is very important to me. I kept my position so long because I love working with children. I simply cannot afford to lose my health insurance. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Janet Allen. I'm the manager of the Shelton High School cafeteria. I may not be the oldest working member, but I've been here the longest, 37 years. I've been through five changes, from the city to canteen to Marriott, to SEDEXO Marriott, to SEDEXO. I would really hate to see any change, but if you must, please choose a company willing to accept the union and all the employees and our benefits. We all have worked long and hard for the system and the children we serve. It would be a shame if cuts were made, and the only people affected are the students. Please take, please take into consideration the workers who have the insurance. Any cut would be life affecting. We have people in desperate need of their insurance. Thank you.
And I also have a pamphlet. I don't know where to start, Bob. If you could just take one in passing. Thank you for listening to us.
Thank you for talking to you.
Would anybody else care to address the board? Would anybody else care to address the board? Would anybody else care to address the board? Okay, sensing none, we will move on. Next item is the approval of minutes, and we have attached in our. Yeah, actually, we'll give them a moment or so to leave. All right, moving along. Um, approval of the minutes, we have attached to our packets, the minutes of the special meeting of April twenty-sixth and the regular meeting of April twenty-sixth.
So, who, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve. Is there any discussion? Sensing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Communications to the board, I'm not aware of any. Okay, uh, superintendents' report and action items.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I'd like to begin by noting that we received notice from our colleague, Principal Ellen Tuckner, that she's going to be leaving the school district at the end of the school year. So, I'd like you to, uh, I'd like to ask you to join me in a, in a round of applause for her fine work here, and we'll be writing to her. The strategic plan work is ongoing. We will be, we will be presenting to you at the final board meeting of the school year, uh, our plan for developing, for not developing, we have been developing, but for implementing next year, some milestones that will be rolled out, that will be part of the execute, the first phase of execution. So, that will come up at the next meeting. Uh, Dr. Ritter attended a recent meeting we had with all administrators, and she was right in the mix on seeing what we're doing, what we're talking about. Um, and I, um, believe.
Two thumbs up.
I believe that you saw it was a, it was a lively and good conversation.
Yes, it was.
Focused, thank you. Thank you for being there. Um, I'd like to ask, um, Kathy Riddle, the Director of Guidance for our district, uh, who's, she's located at the high school, but she has responsibilities beyond the high school. And I know that Dr. Smith is here as well. If you wanted to be part of this, or you're just here to support, you're, obviously, you're part of the reality of making this happen, so, um.
Lights not on yet.
It's going to be a PowerPoint, so I apologize, you're going to have to move again.
Yeah, okay.
Singing to. I'm a few bars.
And of course, the speakers are disconnected, so.
That's a benefit for everyone. Um, so I'm here this evening, um, actually to brag a little bit, just in the sense that we are getting ready, uh, for our graduation scheduled for June fifteenth, um, where we hope to award three hundred and eighty diplomas to the class of two thousand seventeen. And the students, um, as of May first, have decided on where and what they'll be doing next year. So, the class of two thousand seventeen, eighty-eight percent of our students will be enrolling in institutions of higher learning, uh, while twelve percent have other plans. But that eighty-eight percent, sixty-eight percent, uh, are planning to attend four-year colleges and universities across the United States. Um, we also have nineteen percent that will engage in our local community colleges, as well as our technical schools. Eleven percent are going to enter the workforce, and two percent will enter our military ranks. We have some fine schools to present for you. Um, first off is our two Ivy League students attending both Yale and Dartmouth University next year, University of Chicago, which is a great institution, as well as Boston College, Providence College, University of Connecticut, with many students attending both the Storrs Campus, as well as the Branches, Stonehill, which is a beautiful school in Massachusetts, as well as Redcoast University and Ohio State. We also have students attending Fordham, George Washington, High Point in North Carolina, Maris College in Upstate New York, Northeastern, Sacred Heart University, University of Tampa, WPI, Penn State, and Xavier. So, this is just a sampling of a few of the colleges that our students will be maturing into next fall. Um, so it's very exciting. So, we have our students from the class of, uh, two thousand seventeen attending colleges in eighteen different states. We also have one student that will be attending college in Brazil. What is an interesting trend for this particular graduating class is that fifty-eight percent of them must love their moms and dads so much that they're staying in Connecticut. Uh, and I have to tell you that, uh, last year, we were at forty-six percent, and the year prior, at forty. So, and obviously, the majority of the reasons are financial, because trust me, I talked to a lot of the kids. They love to get away.
They'll wait until after graduation.
Yeah, exactly. Uh, so thirty-eight of our students will be attending UConn, forty-six going to Southern, University of Mid Haven, eighteen, Huson Park, twenty-eight, Sacred Heart, fourteen. Students are also going to, um, the other community colleges, Fairfield University, Alberta's Magnus, et cetera. Do you mind if I go into this area?
Yeah, I think it'll be great.
Okay. Um, so, obviously, a direct correlation to college admissions is our SAT results. And this is very hot off the press, because we just received this from College Board. Looking at our SAT mean scores from, um, SHS versus the state of Connecticut. So, last year, we were at a ten fifty-nine. We didn't have an increase this year to a ten seventy-seven mean score. You can see, we are well above the state average, so we'd like to continue that, that growth trend. In our evidence-based reading and writing, we scored from a five thirty-seven to a five forty-three. Once again, another nice growth for our students. In math, again, a nice growth from two thousand sixteen to seventeen. We've done a lot of work in this particular area to go from a five twenty-two to a five thirty-five. And we did have a student score, a perfect score of an eight hundred on the math section, so that's great. Yeah, that's awesome. Um, so when we look at the, um, College Board SAT college and career readiness benchmarks, in order to meet a benchmark, you have to score a four thirty on the evidence-based reading and writing, and a five twenty on the math section. So, um, this year, we had forty-nine percent of our students met both benchmarks, while the state had forty percent. Our evidence-based reading and writing, seventy-seven percent of our students met benchmarks. So, fantastic score. And math, once again, we're up, um, to fifty-two percent. So, that's something that we'll be looking to, for more growth in the future.
Any questions for the server?
I just want to say thank you, Kathy. This is something I've always asked for. So, it's, it's great to, for the board members to know that.
You didn't throw any, any of them to Udel this year, huh?
Actually, there's three, and as soon as I saw you.
I still blame her that my daughter lives in Delaware.
It is her fault.
We didn't know it existed.
At this time, I'd like to ask, uh, Mr. Calhoun, our Director of Facilities, if you could put the mic a little closer to you. He has passed out to board members a, um, a written version of the, um, updates he's going to go over about both the athletic facilities, a little, we're, we're in the very preliminary stages, but just to give folks an update on what we've been talking about, as well as our facilities around the district. As all of you know, I believe, a considerable, a considerable amount of work has been accomplished by, um, Mr. Calhoun and his team, and there's a lot more to do.
Thank you, Dr. Coett. Um, yeah, when it comes to the athletic facilities, we've been working, uh, with a committee to, uh, to look at the needs of, of the district. And we've, we've looked at some, uh, some possible proposals to look for engineering services. So, we're, the idea is really, right now, to identify what the needs are, of course, and identify what, what is feasible to do in the, in the upcoming, uh, years ahead, and, uh, put, make our priorities. So, as we move forward with that, we'll be, we'll be coming forward with, uh, recommendations for what, what the, what the, uh, the school district, we think should, should, direction they should head in, because the athletic facilities are in various needs, you know, various stages of disrepair and ages, and, and they all, you know, they all basically need to be, uh, be upgraded at some point. So, we'll be working on that. Are there any questions on that?
John, in your report that we have in our packet, we saw the, the high school proposal. Are you going to have a proposal for each building or district-wide, or is it just going to be limited to the high school?
About athletic facilities?
Yeah, the athletic facilities.
Yeah, at, at this point, our focus has been, the committee's focus has been primarily on the high school, but with the idea that the high school and some of the middle school overlap and they share realty, as that would continue to be the case.
Right.
But there's so much work to be done in the high school greater complex that we focused on that at this point.
But will eventually, we get to the, the grammar school in Perry Hills level?
Yes, yeah.
Will it be done? I mean, the proposal, can it be done or structured in such a way that it's done in phases kind of scenario?
I, I think with the, with the, with the way that things are laid out.
So, it's a long-term phase?
Yeah, you could certainly do, you could phase, uh, certain aspects of that in. There's certain things that are obviously connected that need to be done at the same time. Uh, whether it be the stadium and the lighting, where you've already got the stadium already tore up, if you want to put, if you're going to replace lighting and wiring and stuff, you'd probably do that at the same time. Maybe refurbish or replace, uh, the bleachers, those kind of things, and the little, the buildings around that area. So, those things, but then you have the tennis courts, you have the various.
Well, tennis courts, you know, I, I'm looking, I, I laugh when I kind of see that, because, you know, that's something we've been talking about for ever. I mean, I, I don't play tennis anymore, uh, but I used to, and they are deplorable.
Yeah.
Um, and we've had, we have been talking, at least ten years, twelve years. Uh, we've tried piecemealing and patching them and, and what have you. And we had huge discussions over the post and how they were sealed. And, you know, when I was building facilities manager, uh, you know, for the, the committee, but, um, I, I would think that we would want to take the things that need the most attention, and safety-wise, too, like the bleachers, uh, we've been talking about that also.
Yeah, that absolutely would be the plan.
That would be the first part, so.
Okay.
And the mayor indicated, and, and Mr. Anglais, President of the Board of Alderman, indicated as recently as this morning, that they're very interested in moving forward and bonding for this over time.
Right.
Um, and because, as, as Winn suggested, there's a lot to be done over the entire district. And they're aware of it, and I think there's an appetite to do some bonding, to take care of this in phases.
Uh, now, I'll get to my report. Dr. Coett asked me to put together this report, so what I decided to do is I would, I would go, basically, this fiscal year to give you some of the, uh, some of the accomplishments that we, we have done as, uh, Facilities Department. And of course, none of these things could be accomplished without, of course, the, the assistance and the buy-in from the, the other, the administrators in the district, the, uh, the staff and everything. So, these things, like I said, this is a, definitely a collaborative effort. So, um, so what we've done, as you know, by talking to me on a monthly basis, that, um, we've streamlined our work order process, and, and, and we've really got the custodial and maintenance department really to follow in step to, uh, the ideal, the ideology that, to never be satisfied with the status quo. You know, the mindset of it's always been this way does not fly anymore. So, in the past year, I'll give you some, some accomplishments that we've done. We've worked, uh, with Ellen, who, of course, is leaving now at Mohegan, but we worked with her on a, on a beautification project, upgrading the pillars, repainting the exterior and interior spaces, and adding shrubberies and plantings to the grounds there. We worked in conjunction with, with, uh, Amy at Sunny Side and the city, uh, to do the furniture replacement project, while we also, you know, replaced all the shelves, uh, did roof repairs, re-carpeting, while I was repairing all the walls and all the leaks that were problematic there, to have such a beautiful facility. We've been working collaboratively with several PTO groups, um, who are looking to upgrade their playground equipment at the elementary schools. And, and I've kind of taken the lead with that, so that we have a quality product, and we have, we have universal, uh, you know, uh, equipment, so that it's, you know, we don't have multiple, multiple manufacturers and multiple warranties and everything. We're trying to streamline that, so the equipment is all up to, up to date and safe for our children. Talking about the high school, uh, for the athletics, last, uh, last summer, we replaced several of the smaller bleachers on the sports complex. And of course, we, we installed a new batting cage for the girls softball team. I think it's been a big upgrade there. We did a lot of painting at Shelton Intermediate School. And we worked with the city, again, in the Fathers Club, to upgrade our basketball backboards and rims at the Mohegan School. In addition to the physical changes that we have done, uh, we're constantly seeking ways to save money in our operations and utilities accounts. We save the district money by bringing in-house our carpet cleaning, gym refinishing, and cleaning services of our, uh, cleaning services of our dust mops and entry mats. Those things were costing us a lot of money for outside contractors, and we could do it in-house for a, a lot less money. Uh, we've partnered with the city on the fuel cell installation at the high school. Uh, we're in the process now of negotiating li- lighting retrofit programs throughout the district to, to upgrade our antiquated lighting to LED technology. And, um, working with the city, again, uh, in the high school administration, we're upgrading the, uh, we've upgraded the recycling program at the high school, which, of course, the overall goal of that is to be a, you know, to be, uh, environmentally friendly, but also to reduce our trash hauling fees. Uh, another measure was we added our school dude building usage and preventative maintenance models. Um, these ways in predictive and preventative maintenance give us better tracking and collection of fees. And that project is, is going well. We've been working on, kind of going back this whole year and collecting all the data that's been going on. And we'll be doing training of the staff, and, uh, every, every school will be, will be entering their work order, I mean, their, uh, uh, school, um, usage, uh, data, as well as like they do right now with their work orders. So, that'll make it a much more streamlined, uh, flow to it as well. So, as I said, our team is not just here to fix leaky pipes and to mop floors. We are always constantly collaborating with administration and technology, uh, to add new innovations, such as the steam lab that we're working at the high school, Makerspaces, and the Life Lab in the School of Innovation with, at, at the intermediate school. During the library renovation at Sunny Side School, we assisted in the creation of a Makerspace there. Uh, like I said, we're in the process to create in the steam lab at the high school, and I'm, I'm confident that you're going to be very impressed with that when that's completed. And, uh, we've also worked with the Library Media Center at the, at Long Hill and the high school, to, uh, to make additional spaces for computer labs and, uh, Makerspaces as well. One of the things that's most paramount to us is our, um, is our safety and health of the, of the students and the staff and the buildings. We've worked diligently with this district's Director of Security, as well as city personnel, to make many improvements. As you know, we recently completed a major three-school fortification project at Mohegan, Long Hill, and Elizabeth Shelton. We are proud to be part of that project. Um, and working with the city and high school administration, that happy to say that we are seventy-five percent finished, if not more, on a major sprinkler system addition and fire code overhaul at the high school. And that project is going really well, and thank, uh, thanks to Dr. Smith and her staff there to, to accommodate the, the contractors there to make that happen. Last summer, we installed a new security station at the intermediate school, which provides protection and surveillance of the schools and grounds. And, uh, we're continually working with the fire marshal and other entities, make sure our buildings are up to code, and that violations are not deferred, but resolved quickly and efficiently. And of course, one of the other things is we've, we've removed quite a few trees on the grounds that have been dead, and that were, we were concerned about falling on either students or, or properties. And, uh, it makes, uh, it makes, uh, makes this facility even that much safer. And last but not least, um, we have a, we have a, a goal to provide constant due diligence to any air quality, water quality, or any health-related issues that may arise in the course of the year, and to handle them quickly and effectively. Before the discussions of mandates, uh, were, were brought about, we conducted our own water quality tests, as you know, and assessments of all, and all of our school buildings, including inventory in our water fountains, to ensure there are no lead issues in our drinking water. We also working, um, at the direction of the water company, we replaced. water. We also working at the direction of the water company, we replaced many faulty backflow devices that were in failure to comply with water company regulations. And of course, that prevents any waters that are already in the building getting back out on the street into other people's drinking water. So that's very, that's very important. And we'll continue, and we will continue to monitor indoor air quality at our various schools whenever there are concerns to ensure that conditions in those spaces are safe and a conducive, positive learning environment. And that's my report. If anyone has any questions.
How long have you been with us now?
A year and a half, a little over a year and a half.
Phenomenal, what you've accomplished.
Yeah.
John, I do have a question. In the report, the indoor air quality report from the state of Connecticut, three classrooms were identified as having carbon dioxide levels in excess of guidelines. I was told that we were going to look into that and have them retested. Has that happened?
Yes, they were retested. We're awaiting the test. But we're also, we're also going to be bringing in a balancing contractor to look at all of the air handling of the equipment so that we make sure we have proper flow throughout the building.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Cahoon? Okay, good. Thank you, John. And finally, CEF, our education foundation, as you know, we, there was a 5K run held in April, which raised some money and was a lot of fun. And we recently held the awarding of our mini-grants. And over $2,000 of mini-grants were awarded. I'm sorry, there was, not everyone was aware of it. There was a little communications issue because we're, they're not, they're separate from us, but we will make sure that doesn't happen in the future. In any event, I did want you to know that nine awards were made of 250,000, 250,000. I wish it was 200,000. It's only $250. But in any event, Desiree Conway and Stacy Riley were winners together. Jennifer Keen, Heather Brown, Dan Ebert, also Carrie Yakowitz, you saw some of her work tonight. Kim Lindona and Heidi Frenigno also put in a grant successfully. Brad Picorillo and Christine McNamara did the same. Rob Szczeski from the middle school as well. Erica McNeil from the middle school put in a grant, a successful grant. Stacy Garrity. And then from PHS, Melissa Fenstermaker, Courtney Dishian, Michelle Piccolo, who you saw tonight. Jamie Lynn Drezick, Brian Sharkey, Roberta Langiel, and Deb Tucker put in a successful grant application. And finally, Virginia Vancil and Carrie Frederick from the high school. The, these awards will be outlined and detailed in the upcoming Grand Shelton Station. Our newsletter will come out and give details about what it is that they applied for. But the organization CEF is growing slowly. Kathy Riddle and Kathy Bender did a great job organizing the, and others, but you took the lead. And the Whiffle, I forgot, the Whiffle Ball Tournament, which was a lot of fun. And so we can only, we can, we're looking forward to growing more, looking forward to more support from community organizations and businesses so we can raise more money and give out more mini-grant awards. And then finally, I pass out to members of the board, and I have extra copies for anyone in the audience that's interested, a copy of our brochure for Project Excel. Project Excel is a project that is funded through the federal government. We worked with our partners at UCLA to get this. But this is a, I think, a nice quality example of clear communications, completely funded by the grant. But it explains what the, what the program is and how we're expanding it for next year beyond its current, its current space in our schools, Elizabeth Shelton and Long Hill. It will expand next year. We continue to do work with our community partners, Plum Library and the Boys and Girls Club. We're looking to expand it. We think that there are some more grant opportunities. This next month will conclude the first year of a five-year grant. So we have a number of years to go. And I believe that we're going to see this have a very positive influence on the lives of our English language students. And I think we'll see that impact their success and also their SAT scores in the future. And if anyone here in the audience would like to have a copy of this, I will leave it up there and get you the table. And that concludes the report.
Thank you. Okay, next item is approved field trips, and there are none. Board action items, items presented for our vote. First is consideration of the board to approve a grant proposal for the Valley Regional Adult Education Workforce Readiness Project for English as a Second Language, which is attached to our-
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion has been made. And seconded, is there any discussion? Sensing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Consideration of the board to accept on behalf of Sunnyside School a grant award of $3,000 from Cass Seaak Endowment and Flanagan Grant Program to expand existing programs in new and innovative ways or develop other worthy programs or projects.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion has been made. And seconded, is there any discussion? Sensing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Consideration of the board to approve continued, continuing participation in Connecticut's healthy food certification for the school year 2017 to 2018, subject to the exceptions and exclusions in the agreement which is attached.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion has been made. And seconded, any discussion? Sensing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration of the board to accept on behalf of Sunnyside School a donation of $5,106.40 from the Sunnyside School PTO to purchase drapes and hardware for the stage area. See the attached-
So moved.
Second.
Motion is made. And seconded, any discussion? Sensing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Consideration of the board to accept on behalf of Shelton High School a grant award of $1,500 from the Valley Community Foundation to help fund the greenhouse purchase.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion is made. And seconded, any discussion? Sensing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item number six, consideration of the board to accept on behalf of Elizabeth Shelton School a donation of $3,911.36 from Elizabeth Shelton PTO to purchase two additional tech tubs.
So moved. Second.
Motion is made. And seconded, any discussion? Sensing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Motion to appoint the superintendent's recommended candidate, Ed Drap, for Director of Finance and Business Services position.
So moved, Mr. Chairman. Second.
Motion has been made. And seconded, any discussion?
Is there a contract involved?
Yes, there will be.
And this is the contract that, do we review the contract, or is that strictly an internal document between the superintendent and the, representing the school system and the candidate?
I believe that will be an administrative function. It will be very much in line with the contract that you are currently familiar with for the-
I'm not familiar with any-
Okay, okay.
That's why I ask.
Certainly, it can be made available for you to see, but there's not going to be any radical changes. So you can, the other board members that are familiar with it won't experience any discomfort with that.
Are we approving then this contract, which some of us haven't seen?
We're approving the hiring.
Well, I understand-
Recommendation of the superintendent to hire is what we approve.
Right.
And that's what we're approving.
Yeah. And in answer to your question, the contract is substantially similar to the contract that we already have funded with our current business manager.
But the contract still needs to be, you know, worked out for details.
Negotiate.
Yeah. So, okay, any other questions? Sensing we're ready to vote, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
One abstention.
Okay. All right. Congratulations, Ed.
Welcome, welcome.
Yeah, actually, for those who don't know, unfortunately, Dominic has sought employment a little closer to home. So we're losing him at the end of this school year. And he's done a terrific job for us. Unfortunately, we were able to find somebody else who is definitely qualified and who I'm sure will do a terrific job for us.
So thank you, Dominic, for your fine service to the district. And welcome aboard, Mr. Drap. We look forward to working with you. And I believe that all of the principals that are here tonight are going to find you very easy to work with and very helpful in our work.
Thank you very much. Look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Okay, comments by the board chair. The day after our last meeting was a couple of citizenship programs at Shelton Intermediate School. And I had the pleasure of attending both of them. And we used it as an educational experience for our students as well. We had the auditorium filled, not just with the people who were becoming U.S. citizens and their families, but with students as well. And I thought it was a terrific program. And my hope is that this is something that we will make a regular part of our program for the future. I thought it was really terrific. I'm thrilled that we did it. Robotics, at the state championship, we made it to the finals round again. We got beaten again by an alliance that's led by a team that is exceptionally well-funded. They have various businesses in their community with very deep pockets. And that team has a five-day transmission shop for their built facility. They have their own practice facility. And still, we came real close. So I feel good about that. The transition from STEM to STEAM has really gained a lot of speed this year.
It's gotten a lot of speed.
No, yes. Yeah, I mean, you know, in terms of the arts, things have been just improving and expanding as the year progresses. I think back to when we had the jazz band performing at the Cap's Dinner for our award recipients. And they were terrific. And I've seen them a few times. They performed just last night at Stones Throw Restaurant. I wasn't able to get there, but I understand they were a hit. A couple of weeks ago, we had the concert at SIS. And that was insanely good. And out in the hallway, there were beautiful works of art that were done by the students. Monday, I was at Perry Hills School for a concert. And they had incredible artwork in the hallway. And actually, there was one that I was really tempted. There was this nice porcelain thing of Minnie Mouse. And right in front of it, there was a little thing that said, "Please take one." And I think they meant the sheet of papers in front. But I was tempted. But in any event, things are happening. And they're happening on all levels. We had the Mine Fest, okay? All of our schools are doing terrific things in terms of the arts and humanities as well as STEM. And I think this is something that we can be very proud of because we are a bank for the buck district. We make a lot of things happen with the resources we have. And it's because we traditionally hire the best people we can find for every job. And I think that's terrific. Let's move on to reports of standing committees, teaching and learning.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There was no meeting in May due to lack of a quorum, but we will have a meeting on Tuesday, June 13th at four o'clock. And I believe one of the agenda items will be the discussion of Elizabeth Shelton School Grade III and IV departmentalization. That is the end of my report.
Okay. 13, 13.
Oh, I was saying, is it the 14th?
Did I say the 14th?
I think so.
If I did, I'm wrong.
That's a-
It's the 13th.
13. Thursday. Okay. 13, okay.
Okay, finance.
Mr. Chairman, we met last week. We took notes on new actions. We did have a review of our building substitute program presented and are going to look at how that impacts the budget moving forward. We also had a presentation by Dean Petroselli and Gary DeFlippo regarding the Elizabeth Shelton Window Replacement Project.
And policy committee?
We also did not meet due to conflicts and lack of a quorum. We meet on the same day as teaching and learning, following them at five o'clock.
Okay. All righty. And then CES?
Well, we're meeting next week. And next week will be our last meeting for the summer. Actually, we're going to be having Pete Smith, our lobbyist, come and give us the state of the state, I guess. This last meeting in May, yes. Basically, our last meeting was for the purpose of two main agenda items. Number one, we improved our budget for 1718. It was $44,831,265, which was a 6.10% decrease. Now, the only thing I may say concerning that, I know that Dr. Piccolo has had conversations with all the local superintendents about this, is that the magnet school tuition, which has been stable for nine years, will be going up next year. Unfortunately, the state has cut the magnet school tuition to the various resk. And therefore, it will be 6% next year, I believe, and 6% up again the following year. Now, I know that's something we didn't plan on in our budget. I know, it actually went up this year, but he is going to hold that through the rest of this year. So, and we did his evaluation also. We went to executive session to do his evaluation, so.
Kay?
Nothing to report, no changes since last month.
Okay, we have no unfinished business and we have no new business. For your information, we do have the vacancy report, staff and stipend actions, and the enrollment report. And my second favorite part of the program is highlights. Does anybody have anything for highlights? Fay?
I'll be brief. I must say, it was, it was a privilege to attend the citizenship program. You know, you couldn't help but sit there and have shivers go through you. It was, it was, it was our country in action. It's something that we all should, we all should experience. Amazing. So that was one thing. Yes, and I also went to the Mine Fest at Long Hill School. And you've heard so much about it, but I must tell you, I, for $1, I purchased this little pamphlet on Stop Bullying. And the author was David, I believe David Taylor. I can't really read this. Maybe it was Daniel Taylor. And the illustrator was Jack Rexo. And they put together this little pamphlet, was selling it for a dollar, so anybody that would buy it. And it's very good because this is a really good age and anything younger than that to inform themselves and everybody else about the dangers of bullying. That was that. And I will tell you, without too much detail, because I believe you all received an email today from Beth Smith regarding the Hall of Fame Committee.
I was just going to mention that.
And I need to say that it, I'm on the committee and I have contributed very little. Just so you know, there's a, there's a, several wonderful people that are on the committee. It's very well organized. And I'm very proud to be a small part of it. So you'll see what we're having.
Just to piggyback on that comment, that the list of choices is wonderful. It's wonderful. And people I thought might be there are, and glad to see it, and others. That made me think, yeah, of course, you know, that hadn't occurred to me.
Well, this is the first year.
It's a great list, yeah.
And then there will be more to come.
Very good, very good.
Kathy?
Well, I went to bring it on at Shelton High School Drama Club under the direction of Sam Lopadia and Joe Sedlock. And it was fabulous. It was just, I just, it is so professionally done that you can't believe that, I mean, it was well worth whatever money, the ticket, what, the ticket. But Beth, kudos to you and your staff. I mean, everybody in attendance, it was just a great, great performance. And then I went to the Mohegan Chorus, which was done, who else was there with me? I forget who was with me, but anyways, and then the, probably one of the highlights was the intermediate school music program where that, that band brought tears to my eyes because it was just, you couldn't imagine the sound. And it was just so well done. And of course, they did an encore performance at the end. And we had a little star presentation by our superintendent with his electric guitar. Kate, you were there, right? And they got a standing ovation led by me, I think. But anyways, it was, Carol Sylvester Mark Bellotta did a wonderful job. And kudos also to Beth and her staff, Kathy Riddle at Shelton High School, because we went to the Books and Achievement Award Ceremony. And 1,500 kids in the school, Beth? You couldn't ask for a better, I mean, they were so well presented and respectful. And I just can't believe, because 1,500 kids that are bigger than me, I imagine it to be like wild. And they were just so, it was phenomenal. We all- We also went to the Mind Fest and then I went to Perry Hill for their music and art program, which was wonderful and I really loved seeing all that fancy artwork. And then yesterday...
You went to Sunnyside. You went to Sunnyside, too.
Oh, yeah, we did go to Sunnyside. All those dots in my calendar, my calendar. I forgot about Sunnyside. We went to the, what, the program, was it? Was it the Health Program?
Where we met my former student who was a police...
Oh, yes. I thought I talked about that last time. And then, of course, we had the work experience breakfast yesterday, which was very nicely done and another great thing at Shelton High School, so I appreciate. And I need to say, we had teacher appreciation week a couple of weeks ago, three weeks ago, but I think it's important to say we should have staff appreciation week because I think we overlook a lot of the other people that helped to make our school system so wonderful. So I want to thank everybody that works in our school system with our kids. That's it.
Anybody else for highlights?
Arlene, the TV show. Remember you sent us that email?
Oh, Brian.
Oh, Brian. I stayed up and watched that. He was very good. I was a stick.
I thought I talked about that last time, but...
And now he will be...
He's going to go to Australia now.
I was just going to say, and it's already sold out.
Actually, tickets, he's giving a speech in Australia and it's sold out. And he's then going to New Zealand and that's sold out. So, you know, Brian obviously deserves all the accolades. I know Kathy, you knew him very well.
He'll be on the next list for the Hall of Fame.
Arlene, ask me who his fourth grade teacher was.
Yeah, and this isn't exactly a highlight, but it's a thank you to the head custodian and the security officer at SIS. Last night, the Shelton Democrats sponsored a forum and the auditorium was set up but then taken down because I think they had a play, practice rehearsal. And the head custodian and the security officer came to our aid and reset everything back up, and I appreciate that. So extend my thanks and the committee's thanks to the staff there. Anybody else for highlights? Okay, I have a couple of things. First, I do want to mention that what was a huge highlight for me in the last month was I attended a CAS awards program and the last and biggest award that they presented went to Dr. Smith from Shelton High School. And actually, there were several people there from Shelton who were well-respected and actually Amy Yost is now getting involved there and that's a terrific thing and, you know, I feel good about that. Last but certainly not least, we do have a number of retirees at the end of this year and I'm going to read their names. These are people who've put a number of years into being part of our team and it's terrific, the work that they've done, and it's also great that they're going to be able to enjoy their retirement. We have Elaine Branca, Mary Brotherton, Barbara Clifford, David DeLucia, Joanne DeRochers, Carla Diorio, Nancy Duffy, Darlene Dunn, Allegra Fitzgerald, Michael Gambardella, Geraldine Garrity, Terry Hillman, Claire Kilfoyle, Linda LaRue, Patricia Laskowski, Barbara Llewellyn, Mark Nescio, Janet Nemitz, Karen Oco, Rosemary Pagliero, Roseanne Rich, Diane Sabotka, Karen Taylor and Nancy Tuttle. These are terrific people and we should give them all a round of applause. Okay, I missed a couple, sorry. Tracy Fagan, Leah Hanko, Lori McColsky.
Don't ever go to that resignation.
Oh, social resignations, okay, sorry. Okay. The other thing is on June 13th, there will be a system-wide retirement celebration at SIS in the atrium beginning at 2:30 and everybody is invited to that.
Chris, are you going to bring your guitar?
Sure. All righty, there is nothing further on our agenda other than my favorite part of the evening, which is adjournment. We are...